Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, September 27, 2022 Board of Supervisors. At this time meeting, at this time, a call to order for closed session. If the clerk could please read out the closed session item and then note that we will be pulling item two of the closed session.
Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation Payne versus County of Calaveras, USDC Eastern District of California case number 117CB00906. The pulled item that will not be discussed today is item two pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
At this time, is there any public comment for item number one?
There is no online public comment.
And see none in the room? And then we will also do a report out of the 9:20 closed session, please.
Report out of closed session from September 20, 2022, item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, County of Shasta et al versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al and Reperdue Pharma LP et al. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we're convening a closed session. See you at nine. Good morning and welcome to the September 27, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll turn it over to the clerk for a report out of closed session, item number one.
Closed session, report out for today, September 27, item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference of legal counsel, re-existing litigation Payne versus County of Calaveras, USDC Eastern District of California case number 117CB00906. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to staff announcement. I believe Judy. Good morning, Judy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Restaurant Director. I just wanted to come before you today and remind you that we are having the employee health fair on Thursday. When we originally started planning this, it was five, six months out, and all of a sudden, it is here. And so Thursday, out front, from 10 to 3, we have many of our county departments, many departments that are here today, will be participating. And so we will have members from animal services, public health, mental health, behavioral health, IT, library, victim services, elections, safety, veteran services, and our Calaveras Senior Provider Network, as well as all of our benefit providers. So this is, we're excited to bring this information to you. And once again, Thursday, out front, 10 to 3. Also, it's important to gather information from the employee health fair because open enrollment is coming up for all of our employees and our board. If you are enrolled in any of the benefits, including cash and lue, there will be things that you need to do. And so we will be reminding everybody and giving you additional information such as flexible spending plan, dependent daycare, which is a wonderful program for those that have the additional daycare costs. And so we're excited to see everybody, talk to everybody, and we're going to have some fun while we're educating you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And then I believe Dan has his hand up as well.
Yes, thank you very much. So we wanted to talk a little bit about, first of all, IT is going to be at the health fair, and we are going to be providing information on cybersecurity. And so we're happy to be participating in that. This ties in with October being Cybersecurity Awareness Month. This is something that has gone on since 2004 that is sponsored by Congress, and it's an opportunity for government and private industry both to be bringing forward cybersecurity awareness information. So the county is happy to be participating in that. We will have weekly exercises, weekly information that we will be providing to all county staff on different cybersecurity topics next month as part of the Cybersecurity Awareness Month. So we look forward to sharing information with staff about that. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Dan. Kathy?
Good morning, Chair Follendorf, Honorable Board. Happy Tuesday. I'm just reporting out. Can you hear me?
Can you hear her?
Kathy, can you try turning up your sound on your system, please?
I have it all the way up. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're leaning in a little bit.
I can just come into the board chamber if you want to move on.
Yeah.
What did she say? Okay. Are there any other staff members online that wishes to comment? Okay. And in the room, we got everybody? Yeah. We'll wait a couple.
There she is.
Hi, Kathy.
Good morning. Pretty quick, huh? Good morning, Chair Follendorf, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development Director. Exciting news. I think you all saw the press release where the Small Business Grant Program has reopened, started on Monday. I've actually got three applications already that I'm looking at. There's about $94,000 left. So it's for businesses that were impacted from the COVID pandemic. It's a community development block grant that we're using to help our businesses in increments of 15,000, 30,000, and 50,000. So send them my way. Any questions?
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, one last. Is there any other hands up on Zoom that I don't see?
There is no other staff announcements online.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. Okay, with that, seeing none, no other staff announcements in the room, we'll move on to item number three, and I'll have the clerk read out.
Item number three, proclamation, Behavioral Health Services Substance Abuse Program. Adopt a proclamation honoring Bryant Wilson for over 20 years of service to the residents of Calaveras County and the Health and Human Services Agency Behavioral Health Division.
Corey, do you want to come up or yet?
Good morning. Today, we wanted to just give our special thanks to Bryant for over, for his 20 years of service. He's provided a numerous amount of community members in our area, and we don't know what we would do without you. We thank you for the service you've provided, not just in behavioral health, but he also participates in the community and continues to give his, everything that he's learned through the life that he led prior to coming here. And we appreciate having you, and I look forward to seeing all the things you enjoy in retirement. Thank you.
I think that he should come up and tell you a little bit about his story and stuff.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the rest of the board. My name is Bryant Wilson, and I am in recovery and was able to find a home here. 20 years ago, I met Jeannie Boyce, and you know how you do the job application thing. And I've had some extensive criminal history in my youth, and I always figured I was going to work in a church or a nonprofit or someplace like that. She said, well, we'll give you a chance, as long as everything that you say is true and there's nothing more to find out, that we'll give you a try. And in fact, behavioral health was in our admin building that we're in now. So it was, you know, five or six counselors in a portable building, which was enough anyway. So learned how to do group, learned how to do DUI, learned how to work with a bureaucracy within, or therapeutic community within a bureaucracy. I learned a lot in the beginning. In 2008, I wanted to become licensed. And so our district attorney helped me do a certificate of rehabilitation with the state of California. And continuing my education in 2011, I became a Licensed Advanced Alcohol Drug Counselor with the state. And I've had benefits of like Supervisor Callaway and Supervisor Toffanelli who have talked to me about what we can do to help in the community and how we can work with the addicted population. And along in that, I really made it my life's work to understand how driving under the influence affects people and how it affects our community. And so Calaveras County has made my life rich and more ways than one. So I just want to say thank you all. Thank you to my supervisors and my friends at work. I really didn't know anything about this, so I was very surprised. So thank you very much.
Don't sit down. I want you right here.
I guess it's come this way.
Somebody give her a microphone.
I asked to make this presentation to Bryant because he's taught me a lot. I'm going to cry.
Me too.
He used to remind me and Judge Moini to come to the graduation ceremonies, and that was always very meaningful, especially when they would say, Judge Moini, I hate you, but thank you for making me go through the program. Anyway, Bryant taught me a lot about a world that is not part of the world I live in. So I thank you for that, as does the board. So we're going to do a proclamation.
Appreciate that.
No, we appreciate it. Whereas Mr. Wilson began his career at Health and Human Services Agency in July 2002. And whereas Mr. Wilson worked in the county as a substance abuse disorder counselor. You should come talk to the board. We're sometimes into sort of. And whereas Mr. Wilson's been serving county residents through significant growth and change and has been an agent of change through all of the challenges. And whereas Mr. Wilson has provided exceptional work, commendable dedication to the residents of the County of Calaveras. And whereas Mr. Wilson's leadership, guidance, institutional knowledge of substance abuse disorders, oh, can I just say SUDs? Okay. And driving under the influence, can I say DUIs? Okay. Regulations will be missed by our Health and Human Services staff. So I wanted to reclaim that the Board of Supervisors has dedicated today in your honor, but I got to get a vote. May I please have a motion?
I will move this item.
Thank you Supervisor Toffanelli. Do I have a second?
Tucker.
Thank you Supervisor Follendorf. That we honor and recognize Bryant Wilson for his many years of service. We express our appreciation to you for your loyalty and leadership to the County of Calaveras and wish you much happiness and good health as you begin this new chapter of your life. You're welcome. But. You guys. You know, I always forget to take. I'll call for the vote, please. All in favor? Are there any opposes? I didn't think so. So it passes on a 5-0 vote of the board. So this is going to be for you, but. That's him. Knocks his hair sometimes when he has all the challenges. So you enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Would all of you please come down? Would all of you come down? Ben, come on down.
Thank you, everyone, for that. Next, we'll move on to general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that was in, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will continue at the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comment to be heard. So with that, I am going to start with Zoom. Are there any public comments for any item not on the consent or regular agenda?
There is no online public comment. And just a reminder to the public, if you want to make an online public comment, you have to be logged into Zoom.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, so with no online comments, we will move to the boardroom. So are there any public comment in the boardroom? And then please be mindful of the time. The light will go green, yellow, and red.
I won't need much time. Thank you for allowing me here today. I represent SEIU Local 2015. I come from a larger counties and was in filling in in Calaveras and Amador Counties. And now is our time, we began negotiations, and we should be here more regularly than just when it's contract time. But it's important to us that you understand the important work that the providers give. I had no idea about Calaveras County and the lack of services available for like WPCS workers. And I really plan on making a difference there while I'm representing this county. If, you know, I talked to a member last week in Avery, and I'm, you know, she told me her story about not being able to provide care for her 21-year-old son. She had an illness herself which led to, to a surgery where she can't lift more than five pounds, and that was the same time her 21-year-old son who she cares for began having a lot of seizures regularly. And, you know, the, she asked, how do I get help? She has the maximum hours because her son needs constant care, and there's nobody to provide the PCS hours, WPCS hours, there's nobody to provide respite, and then there's also lack of medical transportation should an emergency need. She's a resourceful person, and I know she's not alone. I know this county and other smaller counties have a lot of problems with having workers available. And so I'm hoping that we can collaborate at some point to get the word out. There's probably people that can help other people and don't know the need. So that's what, that's what I plan on doing, and I want also that you recognize the importance and the need for people to earn a living wage. So of course, you know, one of the things that we always negotiate for is for living wages. We've done that by raising minimum wage, and it's not enough, particularly with the medical needs and extra gas and all the things that comes with caring for people. My name is Abby Reeve. I represent SEIU Local 2015. I'll be temporarily in Calaveras County, but I will never forget Calaveras County as I, you know, we have a regular staff person here and tell them that's me. And I brought some members with me, Vicky and Kristen, who came to support. They've never spoke publicly before, and they're a little shy now. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
So Terry McRide, New California State Committee Chair and Senator, I have a copy of these for you folks, so you have it for your record. I hope that you put it in the record. We the people, you know, it's such a powerful statement. There's a reason the Constitution started with it, and many have forgotten about that. We the people vote folks in to represent us, not rule over us. We've been seeing a whole lot of ruling and not much representation over these years, unfortunately. So we the people of the state of New California know this to all Californians. This is our third declaration of truth. I really hope you guys will go on to our website and join our meetings every Sunday and Wednesday evening at 7:00 because it's going to impact us, all of us here in this county, a beautiful county of Calaveras, in a very positive way. This is a declaration of lawlessness, violation of the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Clause 3, and on application of the legislature or the executive when the legislature cannot be convened against domestic violence. Apparently, a group, Newsom, is going into other states to advertise to be the governor of this state. Anyway, the state of California has failed to prevent the harm and domestic violence increased by the above-stated invasion, which is indirect violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from domestic violence. Yet the legislature passes laws that openly permit, encourage acts of violence and lawlessness. We've even seen this in Calaveras, our beautiful little county. The post-nominant governor opens prisons, releasing vicious criminals out onto the streets for murder and rape and steal. California is now a state in which there is widespread wrongdoing, disregard for rules and authority, and near the point of widespread anarchy. The state of California governor and the government officials working alongside leaders of foreign governments that are adverse to the United States of America facilitate and encourage the flood of illegal foreign nationals into California. The state of California in open defiance of federal law has declared itself a sanctuary for all persons illegally entering the state. The sanctuary status acts as a magnet for known criminals or terrorists who desire to harm citizens of California and of the United States. The status brings human trafficking and drug smuggling activities to California endangering the lives and safety of its citizens. The state of California has failed to prevent invasion, which is indirect violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from invasion, domestic violence. The state of California has failed to prevent the harm and domestic violence increased by the above-stated invasion, which is in direct violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article 4, Section 4, that guarantees protection from domestic violence. Again, folks, I'd love to meet with you. I can get Paul Preston down here so you can get your questions answered. This is happening. It's happening in a big way, and it's a good thing, and this is what we want. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment?
I got somewhat confused about public comment. My comments regard something that's not on the regular agenda, but it is on the consent agenda.
Okay, you can pull it when it, when it comes to public comment. You can pull it when it comes to public comment. You have an opportunity to pull the item that you wish to consent.
When you, when you're on regular agenda?
Yeah, yeah, I give the, I open it up for the public if there any public comment, and that'll be your time. Yep. Does that work? Under, okay. So is there any other public comment for any items not on consent or regular agenda? Seeing none, I'll go one more time back to Zoom.
There is none on Zoom.
Okay, perfect. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-consventional. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. At this time, are there any board members that wish to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none, are there any staff? And then moving on to public comment, we'll start with the room, and then we'll go to Zoom. Okay, is there any public comment on consent? Come on up to the mic.
Is this what I'm supposed to ask with the item being pulled?
Yeah, which item do you want pulled?
Number, I don't know, the one, the one regarding the budget?
Oh, number five.
Is that number five?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, number five.
Okay, we'll pull that, okay?
We'll pull it. We'll go through the rest of the consent, then we'll pull that out.
Yep. Okay, so item five has been pulled by the public. Are there any other in the room public comments on consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll move it back to Zoom. Are there any public comments on consent?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, with that, we, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items other than number five?
So moved, Madam Chair.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Okay. We have public comment on number five. So you, you do have the three minutes, so just be mindful of the light.
Okay. Well, we're good to go then, huh?
Yep.
Okay. I wanted to wait until your budget process was over, and it appears you're right at the finish line now. A couple weeks ago, some items hit the news in both Tuolumne County and Calaveras County, stating that Calaveras County was $9 million short of being able to get the budget balanced. Well, when I heard that, sorry, but I had to chuckle a little bit. For many years, we told this board not to rely on an illicit enterprise to try to fund the county. And it appears as though the green gold rush and all that kind of stuff, when we were told 10, 20, you know, millions of dollars were going to come in, didn't happen. So I started doing a little bit of digging, and what I found out is that on Measure C, in two years, you've collected just a little over $4 million or at least, or owed. I don't know if this is owed or paid. That's $2 million a year average. That is a far cry from the $11 million we saw on the sign out on the highway for two years, for all the comments that were made up here about all the money that's going to come into the county, you're going to be able to do whatever you want, and budgeting is going to be a piece of cake. Apparently, it was a little bit tougher this year. I also found that. I also found that back in the days when Prop 64 was passed, there was a provision put into Prop 64, which was to return a portion of the money collected by the state to the counties as that revenue was earned. When I investigated that, it's a real easy number to remember on the Prop 64 revenue, it's zero. No one has any idea where the money's at, when we're going to get it. It has to come from the state, probably through appropriation, which means it'll have to go through the Assembly or something like that. But you've got money sitting out there. No one knows how much or really how to get a hold of it. The other thing I took a look at is, since I was in that section, was a division of cannabis control, which now appears to be upside down on their budget. And I know that they, I don't know if they get Measure C money or not, and they're mainly funded by fees for the permits and things like that. Now, with the new budget coming through, and there's been a lot of increase in salaries, personnel, things like that, all of those hours are still out there to process pot permits. And, you know, the amount is going up. And I was wondering, do you have any provision? Do you have any intention of going back and recalculating what it costs, really costs the county to do these pot permits and inspections and enforcement and all the rest of it because the costs are going up? And because of your actions a few months ago, the income is coming down, when you graciously gave them a 60% decrease in their Measure C taxes and another month to not pay it. So, things we... Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
There is no further public comment.
Okay, seeing none in the room, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve item number five?
So moved.
We got it. Moved by Supervisor Graham Mendy.
Second.
Second by Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to the regular agenda. So, next we have regular agenda item number 15, and I'll allow the clerk to read out.
Item 15, action item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, select one member of the Board of Supervisors to act as the 2023 CSAC representative and one member to act as the alternate for the CSAC Association year beginning November 14, 2022.
Supervisor Stopper?
I just would like to thank Ms. Coway for the years that she's put in in representing the county. I look forward to going this next CSAC with her. And I would like to express my interest moving into this next year of being the representative for Calaveras County when it comes to CSAC.
And any other comment by the board?
I would echo Ben's sentiments and Marita has been CSAC rep for many, many years on the board and she's done a good job. And thank you for your service, Marita. Thank you.
Any other comment before I move it to public comment? Jac?
I'll jump in and thank Marita also, but we should probably ask us if anybody interested in being vice chair. And we could do this all...
Alternate.
Alternate, excuse me. Thank you. Amanda?
Amanda.
Yes, ma'am.
You can vouch and tell her in a moment when you... How can you turn that down?
I'm going to move it over to public comment. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, is there any public comment in the room on this topic? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Jac?
I'd like to make a motion for Ben to be, for Supervisor Stopper to be our representative and Supervisor Fallenoff to be the alternate.
I will second that.
Marita, second. Moved, second by Coway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Again, thank you, Marita. It's, you know, the time I spent with you only, I only have had four years almost now doing this and I've been the alternate for you and, you know, you've represented the county well and we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to our regular agenda, item number 16. If the clerk could please read out, and then I believe we have Mr. Packenger.
Item 16, resolution, Public Works, adopt a resolution authorizing the Department of Public Works to apply for funding through the 2022 Calaveras Council of Governments Call for Projects.
Good morning, Robert.
Good morning. This is, in a way, a culmination of a process that we've been meeting about now. There's been a couple of the meetings that we've discussed with you, the projects. So, these are the projects that are, that we will be submitting applications for and we'll see what happens with the Council of Governments.
Are there any board questions or comments on this? Stopper?
So, this is the call for projects to go through COG for Department of Transportation funding and other types of funding that comes down. For the most part, are you confident that you have the groundwork going so we can be as successful with all these going forward?
There is a few that are pretty far along in the pipeline and there are some projects in here that are planning projects. We'll get those things started, so yes, we should be able to deliver these.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Seeing, oh, Coway?
Mr. Packenger, I just want a clarification. You said some are planning, like I can only address in Murphy's. Since there are no plans, does this mean part of the funding we might get from the COG would be for planning?
There's a couple of the projects here that are identified as a planning project and that downtown Murphy's outdoor dining plan is a plan. So, once that's done, we'll move on to the next phase in a future cycle.
But that one, as an example, is already going to be taken care of once we approve the ordinance. So, in terms of the outside dining, I mean, that people can already, will be able to apply. So, what is it that I'm missing on that one?
Well, there has to be a component also for filling in some gaps on sidewalks and walking areas that we've discussed.
Okay.
Try to get perhaps an update to the circulation of the pedestrians to get to the black bar parking area. There's different things that we, that we were hoping to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. With that, we'll move it to public comment. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any in the room, so I'm gonna, is there any online?
There is no online public comment.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve agenda item number 16?
I will move aside, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, five oh. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Your honor, thank you very much.
Okay, next we have agenda item number 17. I will turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item 17, action item, Integrated Waste Management, approve revisions to the Solid Waste Task Force bylaws.
Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective members of the board, Jennifer Cashey, Director of Integrated Waste Management. Here today is the item that we discussed on September 13, 2022, which is the bylaws for the Solid Waste Task Force. We amended, in conjunction with County Council, Integrated Waste Management amended the bylaws to reflect your requests made on the 13th, which included the, to maintain the existing structure, which is an advisory committee, and omitting the ability for them to review the contracts. So, in front of you are those amended bylaws. These bylaws have been sent back to the task force for their review. I did not get any significant feedback with any opposition to the amendments made. We have, there was a reminder in addition to that we missed, which was the task force had requested that there be an Angels Camp City Council alternate, which was added to ensure that they do have an alternate member to be able to attend. And that was the majority of, outside of maybe some, you know, just some grammatical changes and things of that nature. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on those amendments and those changes.
Supervisor Coway, your light on?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Supervisor Stopper?
I'm really good with all this. I just would like to suggest one change to Article 2, number one, first sentence. You know, this, so, it reads, "The committee meets quarterly or as needed at a Brown Act compliance site determined by the director." The last four words I would like to omit, so that it says, "The committee meets quarterly or as needed at a Brown Act compliance site," which is within the lines of all other bylaws I've read within the county. If the commission decides that they want to vote to meet at a different site, to go on a, go someplace else, they should be able to do that as long as it falls within a Brown Act compliance site. That's it.
From my perspective, so long as the task force is meeting at a site that's Brown Act compliant, which would also include ADA compliance, et cetera, then that should be fine.
That's, you know, everything else looks good here. I appreciate the work that Ms. Cashey's done. And I mean, it's not, that's not a big one, but you know, if at any one time the commission decides they want to meet someplace else, that's within their means.
Are there any? Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that. Yes. I believe the reason why there was an available site determined by the director was the direction given by the task force is why we had that in there. So, I do have both revisions in front of me that was recommended by the task force. So, that is, that is the reasoning. We had that in there, but I think that that could be amended and serve our purpose still.
Okay. Are there any other comment by the board?
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Are there any other public comment on this?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, seeing none in the room. Is there a motion to approve the item with the suggested changes by Supervisor Stopper?
So moved with the amended...
AJ, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes. Thank you. Okay, next, Doug, are you going to set up at the computer?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want a five-minute break to let you set up?
Yes, great, thank you.
Okay, so, let's take a five-minute break to allow him to set up. Okay, welcome back. Next on the agenda is item number 18. If the clerk could please read out.
Item 18, action item building. One, find exemption from CEQA. Two, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance repealing Chapter 8.10, Fire and Life Safety Chapter of Calaveras County Code and adopting Chapter 8.10, Calaveras County Addressing Code of the Calaveras County Code. Three, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, I turn it over to Mr. Oliver. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Doug Oliver, chief building official. I'm going to go ahead and post up this presentation right now. What I bring before you is what I hope to be the end of a 20-year saga regarding our addressing standards. This presentation that I have is very brief. I apologize for putting on the agenda that was going to take two hours, but I anticipated some robust discussion, given the history of the situation. Let me get this turned on for you here and we'll get started. Okay, just a brief history on this. We did have an ordinance on the books in 1974 for our county addressing standards. In 2003, however, that was removed from ordinance. It was repealed and replaced by Section 8 dot 10 dot 200, which was our fire safe regulations, which was an INLU version of the Board of Forestry regulations at that time, which established the general necessity for addressing. You'll also find that the addressing standards are a requirement of the fire code. That's been around since there's been a fire code. However, in doing so, they had an INLU standard that was required to go to the Board of Forestry every time the Board of Forestry changed their standards, and that has never been done. So, 8 dot 10 dot 200 is not enforceable in its entirety. In addition, there was some language in the INLU regs for this county that does not jive with the current standards or the current fire code. So, we have a lot of inconsistencies just in our fire safe regulations in addition to the addressing standard. In addition, in 2017, we had an adoption of Chapter 15.09, which is essentially a brief statement that we've adopted the Board of Forestry standards. So, now we have two different competing issues in our own ordinance and one of them's obsolete. So, we have some conflict there. This is the only remaining section that's currently on the books. The Board of Supervisors, made from time to time by resolution, adopt additional regulations. That's it. That's our ordinance for our addressing standards. Our total standard currently is a document that was adopted by a resolution and it contains a lot of mixed messages as far as policy and procedure. So, part of what I'm trying to do here is separate the two and put them in the right place. So, it was never really appealed. From time to time, GIS and the Building Department have collaborated on addressing standards. There were revisions proposed to 8.10 in 2017. The project was never completed. In fact, the framework you have before you started with those 2017 proposals that never reached your desk. So, what we did in this process is we took that original framework from 2017. We reviewed that against the addressing standards that were adopted by resolution. We collaborated with Sheriff's Office, with our GIS, and with the fire districts of the county and came up with something that everyone could agree on before we brought it forward. So, in the focus group, we identified some significant issues that needed to be addressed. We needed to be able to integrate accurate data into our MSAG, into RIMS, into what is, you know, NG 911, which is a big deal right now. We needed it to be intuitive. We need to be able to have staff implement it easily. We needed to eliminate potential errors. We need to codify the general requirements and then, and identify where we have flexibility. And it was identified we needed to essentially just repeal a... And it was identified, we needed to essentially just repeal 8 dot 10 completely, and just recognize that what we had in Chapter 15 was adequate to keep up to pace with our Board of Forestry regs, which changed from time to time. This is the most current addressing standard that I could find that was brought to the board, and that was in 2003. We did have other proposals in 2012. And once again, this was not in ordinance. This was adopted by resolution. So the good news is that addressing standard, most of it is, is a perfect working model. I mean, we've only changed a handful of things, and I'll get into that a little bit further later. Okay, so one of our big things that we did was we separated the policy from the procedure. We recognize that the board sets policy, the departments establish the procedure in order to implement that policy. So part of what we've done here is we've set aside in ordinance exactly what the board is directing us to do, and then the county numbering standard, which is part of this package, is the roadmap that the departments use, the procedures, to get the job done. It should be, I mean, essentially, it's really meant to be that way. The original had language about which departments did what functions, who was responsible for the basic staff tasks, and the problem is, once that's adopted by resolution, if your board decides they want to put this into, put this program into a different department or utilize some efficiency or streamlining, you have to go back and change the resolution or adopt a new resolution. So what we're doing here is just saying that we're making this a program now that's response, that one organization is responsible for, but you can move to any other place you want, and it won't affect what we've already got here. We're rescinding all of the previous language that was in 8 dot 10. We are establishing this as a permanent addressing code, and we're establishing basically which departments are participating in enforcing the standard, which there's really very few. Direct the building official to develop and maintain the county numbering system. So as things change, we'll change in procedure in the, in the addressing code. The ordinance shouldn't really have to be changed moving forward. It's designed to just endure any other changes. This also sets, the new Chapter 8, 8 dot 10 establishes when address is required, notifies requirements, notification requirements for landowners, when a road is required to be named, your general guidance for addressing corrections when there are errors, and something that wasn't there before in appeal process. And this is one of the key elements that maybe want to bring this to your board, was that currently, as it stands, the building official, regardless of who's sitting in his chair, is the sole responsible party for enforcing the standards. There's no appeal. Your board does not have an opportunity to weigh in on these matters. It is simply that guy, and that's a huge problem for me. There should never be one sole person with total authority to render any decision in a government setting like this. So the appeal process is a huge deal. We do need to give people redress if there's an issue coming out of this office. And then we have clear links to PRC 4290, Chapter 806, for adequate enforcement. If someone decides to create their own road without telling anyone, and the Sheriff's Office or the fire departments find out, we have to find a way to get them into the system or find a way to make them compliant, so the enforcement mechanisms are there in the ordinance. Now, one thing that we do have, which is kind of a late addition that we would like to recommend get added to this, is that currently, we do have, on occasion, civil issues between owners over the validity of easements for access. The requirements in the ordinance as presented is that they show to the satisfaction of the county surveyor that the parcel can be legally addressed. So if you have a parcel that's landlocked, they have to show that they've acquired an easement through the neighboring property so that we can, you know, issue entitlements and that sort of thing. So the addressing is a key component of that. We run into issues where, on occasion, there is a neighbor dispute after one entity has identified, here's my surveyor saying that I have access. The process is a little clunky. It involves an extra department, and in short, they expect that the county's going to mediate this for them. Addressing is aside from the civil issues of land ownership, and we want to maintain that. In addition, we want to streamline the process a little bit. So there's one, there's one word in here I do want to change on this, based on what's below. I'll just read what we want to add. What we want to add below this is, "In the case of easement access, the applicant requiring an address shall provide a copy of the recorded deed of easement and a title report for the property at issue. The county will act in accordance with any validly issued court order." Currently, what we are requiring is that if there's a legal access question, we require that the applicant go to a separate land surveyor, pay them to prepare a proof of legal access, which is then given to the county surveyor. They review to make sure that that surveyor, that land surveyor's done their job and confirms that this is a valid legal access, and then we move forward with the addressing. That increases additional cost to the applicant. That also drags the process down for establishing an address in, in this environment. Facilitating construction is a big deal, so this is added time and added cost. In checking with county council and going through their network, they've found that other cities and counties have smaller streamlined processes. They don't include the county surveyor, or they don't include a land surveyor. They simply say, "Provide us a, a copy of the legal access, the, the description of legal access, and a title report." The title report does that job of establishing the legal access. So this will streamline the process. It'll eliminate that additional cost, and it does give us due diligence as to whether or not we do have a legal access. And should this become contention between landowners, this is essentially saying, settle it out in court, and we will abide by what the judge says. So that's essentially what we're proposing to add to this language.
May I, may I ask a question to clarify?
Please.
So in short, what you're saying is, with that, that added language, that someone could, you know, let's say, landlocked piece of property, they, they want to build, build a home. At the time that they come in, they have a surveyor provide documentation showing the easement, so to say, from, from open road for access. At that time, you will provide the permit without it having to go back to the, the surveyor for confirmation unless there's a conflict with the neighbor, at which time they will have to get it settled within court, and at that time will accept what the court says.
Well, we're, we're breaking it down even simpler. We, we're just asking for a title report and a copy of the legal description for the easement, and that's, that's all we're, as long as they can provide that, we'll issue an address. If there's, if there is a dispute after the fact, then they settle that in court, and we will abide by the court's ruling.
Sounds good. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome. Okay, so the, the county numbering system, that's where we locate all the procedural information. We've got, we've carried over all of the previous details and information for how to establish the addressing based on road range and the side of the road that you're on. It's, it's identical to what is in the previous addressing standard. So procedurally, we've, we have no changes. We have removed any direct ties to any technological platforms. The previous standards required certain actions be done in certain programs that we no longer use or can be sunsetted and removed. So this is now very basic and meant to apply to any technology that we get our hands on that may work better. And it also completely eliminates workload delegation. The department heads are responsible for determining who does the work. So you just, you tell me which department it rests in, and we'll take it from there. And then it is consistent with our direction provided in Chapter 8 dot 10, so there's a direct correlation. Now, I do have a copy of, of the county numbering system that we can go through if you have any questions, or I can just take comments. I promised our CAO that I would keep it under 15 minutes, and I, I hope he stopped, he started the clock about 10 minutes ago. If there's any questions, please let me know.
I would say stopper, eight and D, 15 minutes, so you're good. Are there any more questions? Jack?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Doug. You know, I, I understand what we're trying to do here, and sometimes we all get the phone calls about someone with a property line dispute, an easement dispute, and we always reply that that's a civil matter. I think that, you know, if somebody's coming in, I, I think that this is, my opinion, outside our purview. I think that we are asking property owners to prove, you know, they're guilty until they could be proven innocent. Come in and prove to us that you have a right there, and I think that that has a couple implications. First off, if they are fraudulent, we could have possibly some liability, but more important, I just don't think it's our business. I think that if somebody comes in and they say, you know, "I want a, I need an address, and it's a matter of life and safety," which I totally understand, for sheriff, fire, and everything, and I say we give them an address, but I think that making a property owner go and prove to the county surveyor that they've got an easement, prove to the county that they've got a valid court point or anything that comes on, just to get a permit of really any size, or just to get an address, doesn't even mean you want to build something. I have a property, let's say, on Highway 49. I need an address. I'm not pulling a, I'm not pulling a permit for anything. You'll make me go and prove that I have an access and get the surveyor also. So it makes the process longer, more cumbersome. I'm not really sure what we get out of it, except a lot of hassle. So you talked me out of this, but I would just say, get rid of it all.
I think I have a solution to this, because it was one thing that I forgot to mention that, that could solve this, is that I think there's confusion in that item B, that it says to the satisfaction of the county surveyor. If we're eliminating the land surveyor's report, then we don't have to route it to the county surveyor. So we could just change that language to read to the satisfaction of the building official who is in charge of the program. That would, that may eliminate the whole thing, because now we're completely eliminating that step.
What if you're not, we're not building anything. Somebody just wants an address? I'm sorry. But if somebody's not building something, they just want an address, what, what's the building official, other than to give me an address, have to do with the property?
The only purpose in this process is making sure that we have an accurate egress and ingress for fire safety. So our, our process, we try to slim this down to a site plan showing where the driveway's intersecting, and then assign the address based on the road range. And so by, by eliminating the county surveyor in this section, we're actually eliminating a lot of work on their end, and if we just keep this language here, we're limiting, limiting it further down to give the building official the title report and the description of the easement, and give me a site plan showing where you're going to access, and I will give you an address, and that's it.
And I just, I'm just not sure that's our job. I mean, we're looking for life safety, so the police and fire want to know how to get to a place, so we give it an address. If somebody's building a home, they're going to have to go through your shop, and they're going to have to make sure they've got the access and the roads are correct. But I just, that, that's different. If somebody's just coming and looking for an address on their piece of property, for whatever reason, why should I, as a landowner, have to go and prove that? I mean, if I'm going through someone's property illegally, that's a civil issue, and they could call the sheriff on me, they could take me to court, vice versa. I just, I'm just not sure the, why we want to expand our role.
I guess, I guess I can, I can separate these, I think we've convoluted two issues, so I want to try and separate them. This is only if there's access to an adjoining property. If you have direct access to a roadway, this does not affect the process at all.
I understand that, but what business is it of ours? Yeah? Yeah, that's all it does.
That's a good question. Your board may not have to do this.
To this point, it's, it's on the books now, Mr. Garmendy, so we aren't adding it. We're just making it more streamlined. That's the first point. And the second point, even though how much my heart agrees with you that nobody has any business on my property but me, it's required by the state for fire safety standards.
Well, I, I agree with that, I agree with that, Ben, except for the fact that we can drop this section out, and to my understanding, this is not required for fire safety. The rest of the ordinance is to make sure you have a valid address, but making sure that you've got an easement, how is that a public safety proper, how's that a public safety issue?
May I suggest a solution to that when it comes to developed properties, adding that somewhere in, in it?
We can look at that, I, I would need some time, to be honest with you, to research that. I've never heard of a jurisdiction assigning addresses without verifying some sort of legal access. That's just kind of, that's pretty routine, but I, I mean, I'm happy to look into whether that is, whether we could not.
Removing the language that we had added is only the, the last two sentences. I mean, it would, it would essentially read, prior to an address being assigned to a site pursuant to the section, the owner or applicant must establish to the satisfaction of the chief building official that the parcel at issue can be legally accessed from a public road, or that there is a recorded deed of easement granting legal access to the parcel, and end it there.
Right, that's our, that's existing, correct?
That's existing.
But I think what I hear Supervisor Garmendy suggesting is that we take that out entirely, or take out the existing language as well.
That was recommended, I believe, in 2017, wasn't it? In your presentation, it wasn't, in this, it says, agenda item says, it was, it was suggested that we drop it. You know? So obviously, somebody thought it might be a good idea at some point. I, I've just, I think we have to be careful when we start creeping.
Maybe that, what, I understand where Supervisor Garmendy is going, so not necessarily for building a home, but commercial activities, maybe, so that now where if you've got to call 911, you're able to give an address. Because I believe most folks, we're given a GPS code. I mean, I know that GPS code is written on my, my headgate, so everyone can look at it if we've got a call in for a medical emergency, because there's no address. So maybe that's where there's concern, is how do we tell someone when you're out where we're, where you're at?
But we can do that. We could give them an address. I'm just saying that they don't have to go and prove. We don't want to be in the business of adjudicating what's a proven easement or not, right?
Well, I think the purpose of this, I, I see your point, and I think the purpose here is, well, I know the purpose here, is that we don't want to accidentally create a civil disagreement. That's the primary reason for this, is that if someone's going to ask for an address, if it looks like you're going through a neighboring property, we don't want to allow you to use the county process to circumvent a civil process of getting an easement to go through your neighbor's property. I mean, I don't know if there's anything preventing you from getting an address and just having a verbal permission from the neighbor, but the moment the neighbor disagrees with you, and, and I've had this come up in other jurisdictions where we've had a verbal agreement between landowners where we didn't have an ordinance like this, we issued a building permit halfway through construction, there was a falling out, and the neighbor said, "I'm not letting the county cross my property anymore," and it completely destroyed that project, because we couldn't, we couldn't perform our services. So this is probably, 100% just, let's prevent the opportunity to create a problem.
I just don't think we have to be the nanny to everybody.
Fair enough.
If I may add something, because I, as I understand Supervisor Garmendy, this is Julie Moss Lewis, Deputy County Counsel, I, I underst, I think what Supervisor Garmendy is saying is just to give an address shouldn't require this much. I don't think Supervisor Garmendy is suggesting that in order to develop a property, we shouldn't have, require legal access. The thing is, I am not sure that we say anywhere else in county code that legal access is required other than here, so I think that we might be depending on this ordinance in order to ensure that there's legal access for development.
Which doesn't mean we couldn't put it somewhere else, but that's going to require bigger changes.
But there, there's the point that Mr. Garmendy has. I think, I think the breaking line on it, and to, to Mr. Oliver's example, is whether the, the said property with an address is being developed or not. the, the said property with an address is being developed or not. See?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that, that's, that's where I'm sort of hearing this. But it's complicating something, it looks, what you have here, and what you're proposing at the end of it, I agree with and seems to be working for me, as one, but, you know, if we get to a point where we want to address his concerns, I think it's the differentiation of whether the property's gonna be developed, or is developed, at that point, that they would have to propose a legal access. 'Cause, you know, if he, he's got his cow land, or pasture, you know? You know, it's, it's one thing for him to take down the fence on the back forty or not, you know, but that, you know, that, the access is kind of a null point.
Well, in, in addition to that, there's certain structures that don't trigger addresses, unless you request an address.
Right.
There's nothing preventing you from coming in and saying, "I want to address this parcel for the future, and we'll give you an address." Where's your driveway? "Well, I don't have one yet." "Okay, well, here's the road range between here and here." There's nothing in the, in this ordinance, or in this, in the county numbering system that prevents us from looking at the road range and saying, "Okay, this is the most reasonable spot." But then, if, when you go to develop it to put the structure on, if the driveway doesn't align right with the road range, we may tweak it left or right a few numbers to make sure it falls in line. Or, going further, any wells, septics, small accessory structures, agricultural development, things like that, don't generally have to trigger an address at all. We currently do some of that, but there's no reason why we have to. I mean, building permits, the only requirement is that you give us the location. So you could, I have a whole stack of historic permits that state that it's a quarter mile down the road from the juniper stump off of this main road. I mean, it's legal, so we can technically do that. The function of this ordinance is to comply with our fire standards, and to make sure that the sheriff's office and the fire departments have a GIS point and a address that they can associate with an emergency so they can get there. So there's a way to make that work, we can, I'm not married to any of this language.
And I totally support the public safety. I'm just worried, obviously, my concerns are the other side, we're adding stuff to that.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Supervisor Calaway's been patiently waiting.
I had to wait till the boys finished. I totally support an appeal process, that's sort of been the culture of the board, so I think that's a good idea. I, I support this for several reasons, but I have some concerns, the process for renaming a road. I couldn't figure that out, 'cause we've had those. We had someone who had an address to a road, on a road, that didn't go to their parcel, and they had to go through a fairly laborious process to get it changed to a road that accessed their property. I'm thinking it was, was off Highway four, it was like private roads, Cedar was their address. I mean, I mean, it's just an example.
And they couldn't get to that street?
And they couldn't get, so they had to go to another road, and that process. I think all of that should be allowed under the jurisdiction of your department, not coming to the road. I remember, going back to what Supervisor Follandoff talked about, for UPS and FedEx and so forth, there are a lot of people that utilize a numbering system.
Right.
Including inviting people over for dinner, and they GPS you, not that GPS is correct. And I remember the trauma drama we had on Aurora Road, because Aurora Road was an old cow road, and people needed addresses, but they needed to go back and get prescriptive rights. So, does this take care of those kinds of things? Oh, and then there's one more that's occurring now, they have an address of Main Street, but, and somebody went to build a house next to them, and they were told that street can't be Main Street, you're gonna have to pick Broadmoor or another. How does that happen? Do people pick their names of their streets themselves? And is that approved by your department?
So the, the process as it currently is, I can't, I can't speak to the other processes in the last twenty years. I, I can say that there historically has, have been some hotspots in each district where the addressing doesn't make any sense. And, so what we do currently, and which is represented in the numbering system here, is that if you, for subdivisions, they're going to go through the planning process, we're going to see the layout, we're going to do our best to establish the addressing based on the road ranges, and establish that when you have a new subdivision, it rolls out with the correct addressing to begin with. When we're looking at the older projects, we go directly off the site plan for that development. So wherever they put their driveway, wherever that connects to the, the public road, that's the road name that we're gonna use, and then we assign the, the address number based on the road range where their driveway intersects that main road. So in the case of Cedar, that subdivision was approved with addresses facing the wrong direction for the topography. When the homes were built under separate permits, for some reason, they, they didn't recognize that the driveways changed and faced off another street. So we have a bunch of Cedar Road addresses, as an example, I'm not sure if Cedar's the right address, but, or the right road name, but we have a handful of those where it says this road, but their driveway connects to this road, and then they go to get an accessory dwelling unit, and we have to provide an address, and now we have an inconsistency. Or the, or if the fire department doesn't know that address is on the wrong street, we've actually had complaints where someone has had a heart attack, and the fire department drove by the, the driveway twice, 'cause they thought it was off a different street. So, this, this numbering system does allow you the flexibility to recognize direction based on driveways, just like we're doing now, but it also gives you the flexibility if we have someone come in and get an address, and the correct address is out of sequence with everybody else, because those addresses are old and out of sequence. It gives us the opportunity to look at it constructively and cause the least amount of impact to the neighborhood, and work with the fire department, work with that district, and say, "Okay, does this, does this work for you guys?" So it, it does give us flexibility, it does give us the ability to correct these errors as we find them. I, without getting into the nuts and bolts of it, we've got you covered.
All right, I'm gonna try one more time. If that's right, ma'am chair. So, see if I can find enough votes here. So, assume, walk me this. My grandmother's passed away, so it's a safe one to go with. They live on a piece of property that, we all know how these property lots in Calaveras are fractured from a mining history. So, she lives on a house that was built in the nineteen twenties, that is over five lot, five different separate lots to get there. It might only be a quarter mile driveway, but that's the way it sets up. She, we decide that Grandma needs an address for fire and safety. We can all agree that's a good thing. We send Grandma down, and she goes into building permits, says, "I need an address." Is she going to have to prove that she has an easement to cross each of those lots? And then, assuming that, you know, it may not be in the original deed, but might have been happening for the last hundred and twenty years, is she gonna have to go to court and get a prescriptive easement? How would we handle that type of situation?
That depends. If the family or the family trust owns all those parcels, you don't deed an easement to yourself, so no questions. If there is a neighboring parcel that they're going through, if that, if I can establish that that house has been there for a hundred years, to the satisfaction of the building official, I can, you know, I know that they have access. You know, so I don't necessarily, if, if we adopt it the way it is here, we can get a record, you know, we, we can get the record of survey, or, I'm sorry, the legal description of the easement from the recorder's office, we can get the title report if it's ever changed hands. But there's opportunity in here, and also, if there's a disagreement where I require something that you don't think is appropriate, you can take it to the board and have them hear it, and your board could decide that, don't ask for that again, Doug.
My, my next question is, if you come in, a lot of these easements in this county are very old, and some are not specific.
Yes.
I mean, they're very vague. So what kind of liability does the county take if we're asking you and the county surveyor to adjudicate what is a valid easement and what might be a little gray?
May I answer that?
I'm gonna defer to the attorneys on that.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Supervisor Garmendy, the, you know, we've, we've actually just, you know, recently had a situation like that, and I think, you know, we've looked into it, and we don't believe that, that issuing an address is issuing any property rights, and we don't want, and I, and I think some of the language we're proposing here makes it clear to the public that we're not adjudicating final property rights, we just need to be satisfied that the, the location, that the address is being given, given to. I think for new development, we are concerned that there's legal access to the new development. I think your, your concern with the person who's been there forever, on a house that probably already has an address, it just might not be the correct address, we could separate the legal access proof requirement for those who just need address correction, instead of requiring legal access for correcting address, we can only, we can change this so that it only is required for when it's being assigned to new development.
A question on Jack, sorry, move it up, can I, to piggyback off of Jack, what about, is there, because of the age of so many areas in this county, some kind of a grandfathered process as well?
I think I have a solution to this. Because I understand, I, I, I think I know where you're going with this.
Okay.
Huh?
Okay, go.
Just one other, one other thing before you answer that, in relation to that, to what Julie just said, a, a lot of these don't have addresses, the older ones, 'cause they have PO boxes, and there was no mail delivered to them for years and years and years and years. So they're out there, and, and they have a grandfather, what they consider grandfathered in easement, out to their property and to their home, and, and how do we get around that? Because if there's a fire out there, and the fire department doesn't know where to go, because they don't have an address, they simply have a PO box number, so.
So I'm picking up, I, I, I put the pieces together here, I think I got a solution. If we were to modify B, just to say, prior to an address being assigned to a site as pursuant to this section, the owner or applicant must establish to the satisfaction of the building official that the parcel at issue can be legally accessed from a public road, period. That way, if there is confusion, we can say, get the recorded deed, or, you know, get, get the, get the, the recorded description, get the, you know, title report, but on something that is so patently obvious that, that it's existed and you have access, we have the ability to take the risk and say, "I'm not gonna make this ninety-year-old woman find, you know, something that doesn't exist in history, we're just gonna give the address out." I think, I think doing that eliminates the issue, but still preserves a process. Does that, does that work?
So if, taking Jack's example, if he sold one of those parcels, or the family did, to Mr. Sagala, and then we go down the road, and now we want an address for Grandma, we're saying that because that house has been there for a hundred years, that they can legally cross my property, Mr. Sagala's property?
That, that's part of the civil issue of a home sale, that if there's, if there's a lack of access that's found by the title company, and there's generally a process for acquiring that legal access, so that, that's completely aside from our process.
So, if you sold Al that property, I would certainly think, in his deed, since you're selling it to him, that it would be registered in his deed that he has legal access to an easement through your property before he bought that property. And so he has, he has a legal deed stating he has that authority to cross that property.
I would also recommend that he waits for the interest rates to drop.
Yeah, unless he pays cash.
So one suggestion that I think I-
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie, I didn't-
I just was trying to offer another solution, which would be in eight-ten-one-fifty-A, under address correction, under that paragraph that says, when the building official determines that an existing address does not conform to the CNS, he can assign a new one. We could just say eight-ten-one-twenty-B does not apply to the, to this, to this chapter.
That could work.
Or to this, to this section.
Yeah, that would, that would address the issue of if we've got older properties that maybe need a fix to their addresses, as opposed to establishing an address for the first time.
Is that eligible to you, Mr. Garmendy?
Well, I'd have to take a look at it, but to, you know, to what Doug said, sorry, I'd have to take a look at it, but to what Doug said, I think when he said legally accessible, where life and safety, if there's a fire or an accident, fire department's gonna get through that property. So I do think it's important that there is roads sighted so they could get there, but I've never seen the fire department ask for whether you have a legal easement when crossing someone's property. They had, they have the universal gate openers. You can get through pretty easy. So, I, I don't know, I, I, you know, my concern is, is grand, is bigger than wordsmithing on this. My concern is that we're in business that's not our business.
I, I will, I, I, I guess I'll just say that I completely understand your point, and I appreciate it, because I, I have similar sentiments. Since I've taken this office, and I was informed that I was also in charge of addressing, by the way, I, that would have caused me to pause a moment, but, since I've taken this on, part of our greatest struggle with getting this sorted out is the application of addresses without a standardized system to make sure we're not creating problems. And, and this is a, this is a function of trying to straighten out the wrinkles. GIS and I have spent many hours, staff has spent many hours, looking at what happens when you don't prove out the access is going the right direction, or that it's legal. But, that's not to say we can't take it out, it just, it makes things a little dicier when you're trying to hold the line on someone getting an address in a manner that allows, you know, fire authorities, or even the Amazon delivery person, access that location. I mean, I, I get it, I mean, we could, I, paring it down to one sentence may do it, putting in the language that, that this in no way affects the reassignment of addresses. We have a couple different options here, I mean, what is the pleasure of your board, I guess is the question.
Ben?
Go ahead, Ms. Calaway.
This goes back to Ray, when we set up, we had a, an employee that was just dealing with addresses. Again, I hear what Jack's saying, but somebody has to do it, somebody has to be responsible for this. We can't have different entities doing it. And if I remember correctly, you don't get a final until you have an address. Is that correct? Your address has to be posted?
We typically don't issue a permit for an occupiable structure without an address assigned, we don't final a permit if it's not posted in compliance with fire code.
So it still falls back on us, and we say, "Well, we shouldn't be doing it." Well, my, is who should be doing it? I mean, let each of the nine fire districts in Calaveras do it? That's not very productive. I don't, I think if nothing else, it comes to us by default, whether we like it or not, and this is, I kind of think the changes that Doug's made are not gonna answer every single scenario that comes up, but it does get the bulk of them. And we're just doing the policy, he's going to implement it, and as things come up, his department will have to address that. So I think that for no other reason, that it needs to rest with us, and with the changes made, that we should approve this.
Ben?
We have to do it for developed properties per state law. So I'm kind of going off on another one, but I would remind you that the job description you have, Doug, also says, or duties as assigned.
Agreed, agreed.
Disagrees. So you get addresses.
Very well, sir.
Here's a point that you've sort of answered already, but we're bringing this under one house, is what you're saying. Because there's a lot of things here that go back and forth between the, you know, not necessarily public works, but it lies within public works when it comes to our county surveyor and everything. So I'm reading through here on, let's see, page two, I got it highlighted, 267. You know, it keeps referring to the building official's decision. So this lies within your house. But there's other things when it comes to a new address about signing and staying within DOT rules and everything. Will that be underneath your inspectors as you move forward? Because it's underneath, right now it says it's underneath your house and, you know, where does it reside? Because I don't, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up is far too often, we'll use the business license, for example. People have to go all over the county, they don't know where to go. They get one information from one department that doesn't necessarily align with the information from another department because they have different, you know, roles to play. So they might not know all your procedures. So my interest is when we put things forward like this, although, you know, a sign inspection would usually fall underneath public works, I think it should reside within one house if one's responsible so that people aren't having to spin until their head falls off trying to figure out how to get through the process.
Let me see if I can try and answer that, because that's kind of a big topic because we have-
I know, and it doesn't just apply here.
Let me chop it way down. In essence, the county surveyor in the past has provided a service to the building department in verifying the legal access. They are not required by law to do that. It's a service that they do and they charge for, or I believe they're charging for that. Anyway, when it comes to the enforcement of all the other items, the fire code, the 4290 addressing requirements, the roadway requirements for 4290, those are local agency which the building department is responsible for in the application of a new structure permit. If there's any inconsistencies, it's the fire district that makes the final determination if there are issues. But when it comes to any other instrument, the county has the local authority, if it's not my authority to issue that instrument, it's that department heads responsibility. And we often work together on these things. So if it was a grading permit, for instance, they route it to me and I check the 4290 driveway requirements for them. So we provide a few services back and forth. This is an attempt to streamline it further. It is an attempt to eliminate a little workload on their end and bring this in-house and push the process a little faster. So that's part of it. Did I answer that question wrong?
Yeah, no, it's a broader question. I can't be 100% aggressive this time because of the things we're doing.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffinelli. So yes, for the most part, yes, you did answer my question. You know, I appreciate you working to streamline the process and, you know, bring more inside the house. I just, you know, as we move forward, we will want to possibly look at doing that on a larger scale and that may affect this down the road. You know, I think this is generally written in a way, for the most part, where it won't affect the policy or the ordinance here, so that needs to be changed though. You know. All right.
Okay, any other supervisor comment? Any other staff comment?
So what is the consensus as it pertains to this paragraph? Do we want to remove language? Do we want to maintain the language? What is direction at this time?
I would be in favor of keeping it with the adjustments that you said on it.
The adjustments of bringing it down to one sentence and making it building official or just changing the county surveyor to building official?
The both one. I don't think we can, I'm sorry to interrupt, I don't think we can, if the intention, Doug, is to give flexibility, I don't think we can say that they have to establish to the satisfaction of the building official that the parcel can be legally accessed from a public road, period, because that actually takes away, that's a more stringent requirement.
How so?
Because the way you have it right now, the way it's being presented essentially gives multiple different avenues for establishing to your satisfaction or to the surveyor's satisfaction that there's legal access. Either you can legally access it from a public road or show us an easement, a legally established easement. If you ended the sentence after public road, you've only given them one option, you have to show legal access off of a public road.
But it would open it up to being able to say, show me a deeded access to that public road, because it's implied rather than expressed. So instead of being locked into a requirement, it becomes an item of flexibility and discretion.
I suppose you could interpret it that way. To me, it looks like you're decreasing flexibility, but-
So would you leave it the way it is? Leave it offended?
I think in terms of, I think the way it reads right now, the way it reads right now gives the building official parameters that you have to have legal access from a public road or that you have, you know, a recorded easement from a public road. So yes, I would recommend that, if that's what a majority of the board wants to do, I understand it's not what Supervisor Garamendi is looking to see, but I would recommend the language presented if that's the intention.
I have another idea.
Again, what page is that? It's like reading. Or eight dot one oh dot?
120B. And then, and Doug, actually, there was a change to what's in the packet. So I think, I believe what Doug had up on the screen was the more current version. What's up on the PowerPoint right now, excuse me?
We could also just add, let me just make one more recommendation that might work. Let me throw another.
I don't, I don't. Let me read this.
In the sentence where it says it shall apply, or sorry, shall provide a copy of the recorded deed of easement and a title report, we could all add to that sentence, or other means necessary to satisfy this requirement, or something similar to that. So that if, because that, what's written here doesn't hit the target as far as, what if it is a historic property that has historic agreements that are not on record? We do have those in the county and by adding some language to that sentence to allow for other means to justify access, that does open it up.
It opens it up, it does then put you in a position of maybe having to make those judgment calls as opposed to having it be more clear cut. So just understand that you'd be potentially inserting yourself into disputed ones.
Right. I hear you now because the or, you know, which is the crucial action word here, or, you know. So it gives you options there. And then, which comes to my point, I was going to ask before we finish this all up in, here, I wrote it down here. It's at the beginning of our building code, Doug. You know, it's the one I love to bring up to you all the time, you know, to the discretion of the authority or department head of said that they, that if they're, they can find mitigating circumstances to, you know, the discretion's to you if you can find legally mitigating circumstances. Is that in here at all?
Negative.
I do always like to leave a little room for discretion because the world's not perfect and sometimes you have to work around certain issues that are unforeseen.
Supervisor, stop. Sorry.
Our objective is public safety and access. I think that's clear. What we want to do, so my question to Doug is, do you believe that the barriers that we presented cost-wise, from either getting a prescriptive easement put together by the court, finding the title reports, assembling this package, will reduce people's access to getting the life safety measures of having an address? Or do you think it will improve or decrease the amount of applications that will, since we're trying to do a public safety, I'd like to see what your opinion is on that.
I can only think, I can only think of one time in the last three years where it's been brought to my attention that they could not find a legal access document or provide a land surveyor's record of, or statement to that effect.
But we're requiring them to go seek that, pay for the title report and pay for the land surveyor's time?
Well, to be fair, yes. I mean, but we've issued about, I want to say anywhere from eight to 20 addresses a week on any given, any given time of the year. So the percentage of this is incredibly low.
Well, I think we need a little bit more leeway there. I agree, it could be other ways of going about it. Could they not just get a notarized document from the property owner that they're crossing the property from, saying they gave legal access to them?
That would be an easement.
That would be an easement. Without going through all the doc, going to court and going through all this other stuff, I mean, if there's no legal deed to it that they can find-
Supervisor Toffinelli, the only issue with that is if somebody, if a current owner just tells somebody, even if it's in writing, you know, you can cross my property, that doesn't necessarily run with the land and if that property then changes hands if it's not recorded, or if somebody doesn't have an easement by way of use. So I mean-
That's true.
Because if you buy that property, you're not from the area.
It has to run with the property.
I can validate multiple times it's a problem even when it's recorded.
No, it's true. I agree with Steph. It might take me six years, but I can now count to three.
So we're going to change county surveyor to county building official?
Or chief building official?
Or chief building, sorry.
Whatever you want to call it, it works for me.
Or building department, I'm, it's all right, chief building, whatever, chief building official. One other question I have is the last, the penultimate sentence, sounds like the same to me as the one before it, that there is a recorded deed or can be legally and there's a recorded deed granting legal access, blah, blah, to the road or driveway, then the applicant shall provide a copy? I mean, is that maybe a little redundant? That's more a list of things you need to do?
I'm searching, I'm searching for a way to word that differently.
So the owner must establish to the satisfaction of the chief building official, the parcel at issue can be legally accessed. Well, how do they do it? They give you a copy of the recorded deed. Do we need to even do that? Do we even need to say that? We're telling them how to do it?
I see what you're saying. So if we eliminated that sentence, if we just removed the language that we're proposing, you know, essentially, it really doesn't hurt anything. It does, you could argue that it does open it up because now we're not requiring the county surveyor's involvement and we're also not requiring that you show legal access through, you know, the title report.
Right, I think, I think the-
You're leaving it open to interpretation.
I think the intention of that sentence was to do exactly what Supervisor Callaway mentioned, which is basically tell someone how they are to establish to the satisfaction of the building officials that there's legal access.
Right, I was saying, is this, are we drawing the line between procedure and policy?
Right, you could-
Is this procedure that should slip into the-
It could, that was going to be my suggestion, you could put that in your procedure document, leave that first sentence and then the next one would be explaining how they are to prove that, that could go into your procedure if that was the-
Yeah, just remove the in case of legal access, the applicant requiring the address, shall provide a copy of a blank, put that in the numbering system.
Cut, paste, Doug.
Cut, paste.
I have a question through this whole process. If this, if these documents are already recorded with the county, what are we then asking that said individual to come and prove to us? The only thing I can see that being is that the deed was done, but no one ever brought it to the county to be recorded, or back to Supervisor Garamendi's point, some of this stuff is so old, it's embedded in a lot of the survey documented paperwork from over 50 years ago. So if we're still running the process, wouldn't we research our own files and archives before we would ask to go through the same steps for an individual?
So, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But what that's asking staff to do is we're asking staff to go look, because you just go to the recorder's instead of putting it on the applicant to show the building official that they have legal access, you're then asking staff to go to the recorder's office and do that. And I don't think you should-
Well, to the point of we're trying to go electronic and shouldn't, I mean, I-
So the question is, does the building department have access to all the recorded documents in the recorder's office?
That too, yeah. I mean, if we're trying, if we're either, I mean, and it might be a conversation, I'm asking something that's for a different day, but I guess it just, if you can search it, how are we not able to search it internally before we start doing a redundancy?
I guess I look at it as, when you apply for something, it's up to you to prove that you have it.
I would, I would, I just-
You know, if it was easy for the building department to just log on to the recorder's office and there are thousands of recorded documents to find it.
There's also, I see your point and I would also add that when we're providing a service, we are charging a fee commensurate to the time it takes to provide the service. And if we're the ones going through the recorder's office looking for data rather than the owner, our cost to provide the service would be higher than if we have a system like this where it's greatly reduced and we compare it down to maybe a half hour to an hour of work and we've got an address for someone.
Just for the common person, that's just a normal question they would ask. It's internal, so why am I, so now we can have that explanation to consist with when they ask.
In my quest to stay out of everyone's business as much as possible, I rely on the owners to provide the information to me. Otherwise, I dig and people complain.
Problem solved. I appreciate Doug's because he's sincere about this, but he's also got his job to do. And that's, if I might, we took out the county surveyor, my only thing on this would be, we say legally accessed and then we say granted legal access. I think that if we just said access to public roads, a recorded deed of easement granting access, because I think if we're, I don't want to be in a position of determining what a legal access, if it's a legal easement, that seems like a court issue. So I would say we shouldn't be making judgments on what's legal. If you have a granted easement to the parcel and public roads, you have a granted easement. If it's legal or illegal, isn't that for our courts to decide?
I think the intention here was actually to remove that, trying to make the, you know, putting Doug or whoever in the call of making that decision as to whether or not it's legal by, you know, by stating that if it's recorded, good to go.
But we don't do that.
Oh, it does, right here.
We say that the parcel at issue can be legally accessed. How about why can't we say it can be accessed from Puck Road and that there's recorded deed of easement granting, not legal, but granting access? I just think that we're making, isn't it, I mean, I- I just think that we're making, isn't it, I mean, I know the law isn't supposed to be subjective, but I don't really want to be in that position.
The more, the more we go over this, the more it sounds redundant between the original language and the added language. It might be best to strike it out.
So Doug asked a question earlier, so going back to Sarah's language, do we want to leave it as we first asked it to be amended, or?
I guess I'd like to, I think we should leave it in, because otherwise we'll just get a document that was notarized, and that's granting easement, you've got it. I think we could take out the last two sentences and change county surveyor to the chief building official, and it's a wrap.
Just leave it at the parcel from a private road or driveway? Period.
Doug could put into his procedures.
Very good.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept item B as modified, or accept the...
We need public comment.
Oh, that's right.
Al's sitting there patiently, just making notes. She's the only one, he's going to require six minutes.
Are we good? Can I go to public comment? Hey, come on up.
Told you, he's bringing his notes.
We're so blessed to have a good, a good building official. Doing land sales and real estate for about 30 years, handled many parcels. Many parcels that had handled, had prescriptive easements, they did not have deed of easements, though usually, this is a title company issue, and they make sure that there's not only a deed to the property recorded, but also a deed to the access easement. So not only there's two deeds to a property. But this is, this is really complicated, because we're trying to picture a situation where we don't want to be overly restrictive, but we still want to protect the county. So I would recommend that, I was going to recommend that we drop the last sentence, the county will act in accordance with a valid issued court order. That would imply that maybe there's court orders that are not valid. So, but hindsight tells, maybe we ought to also drop the red changes and leave it as simple as possible. There's, there's an old saying that, the kiss, K-I-S-S, that means keep it simple, sweetheart. And that would be more kiss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have his other four minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Al.
Louida, you like that?
You and Al agree, it sounds like, drop the last two sentences.
Mr. Segala, you and I agree. I can't believe it, it's probably the fourth time in 25 years. Thank you. I'd like to introduce and waive first reading of the ordinance as modified. We will change county surveyor to the chief building official and drop the last two sentences of 810120B.
Okay, did you motion? Did you motion, or is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor? Say aye, aye, all those opposed? So 4-1, that what I had?
4-1 and a half, 3-1 and a half.
With 3 and 2, eh?
I'm on the fence.
There was one, I didn't want to bring up about what I brought up earlier, but I'll be in there for now.
Okay, so that's a 3-2.
If you want to amend it, you can do that, if you want to amend the ordinance.
I just, I, well...
Hold on, Mike, Mike?
Can we vote?
Yeah, you voted.
Well, you could offer an amendment, Kenny?
Certainly.
We're going to vote a county control. Sarah, what can we do?
Does he have a move, or he wants to...
One of us has to rescind our vote.
Yeah.
What is it that you want, Ben?
Well, 8.10.100, purpose and scope of chapter. You know, for a lot of these what-ifs, C says, "It shall be the responsibility of the building official to assign physical address to all cites, cited as..." Is that spelled right, first of all? "...in buildings other than accessory buildings within the county in conformity with this chapter." And I would like to add, also to something to the sense, the discretion, within conformity of this chapter, with the discretion of the official under mitigating circumstances, something to that effect, if there's anything that's...
So the chief building official is authorized to use discretion in the enforcement of this standard?
With mitigating circumstances, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Something to that effect.
Yes.
But isn't that true on an operation basis anyway?
It doesn't say it specifically here, but, you know, you did take your vote, and no one's rescinded their vote yet, so...
We can call for another motion.
Julie, would we have any issues there with respect to this just being a ministerial approval?
I think that it, I think it does make it, I think there are some issues with it being too discretionary it could be. I think it's safer to just leave it at is, as is. Under a ministerial approval, I mean, I think that Supervisor Callaway said, it already says to the satisfaction of the building, the chief building official, so that already gives him discretion to look at whether or not access is adequate.
I got it. I think I got a way around this.
Well, we aren't necessarily there to changing it yet, so I hear what Julie has to say, but isn't issuing a building permit ministerial process as it is? And the state goes ahead and puts that at the beginning of the state code.
Got it.
I mean, it's, it's up, it's up to you guys. I mean, I, I mean, from just, there are some other legal issues that the more, the more we make it clear what the standard is, the easier it is legally to say that it's a ministerial ordinance.
So this is, this is common language in the building code, in other codes that are ministerial permit regulations. So what I, I recommend here on item C is the building official is authorized to use discretion in the interpretation of this standard in the event mitigating circumstances prevent strict enforcement of these standards. So something similar to that, where I'm not waiving requirements, I'm interpreting in order to make it fit in the situation where it just doesn't fit. That, that's pretty common.
It is. I would concur, but it's up to the board if they have appetite for that, because they already made a vote.
So because the board already voted, if the board wanted to reconsider, someone who's in the majority could make a motion to reconsider, and then could have a new motion.
Okay, is there a motion to reconsider?
I will make a motion to reconsider previous vote on this issue.
Is there a second?
Does second have to be part of the majority?
It would probably be safer, but just so we're clear on what the new motion is, the new motion is the changes to approve the item with the edits suggested by Supervisor Callaway, and now also the additional language that Mr. Oliver just dropped it into 8.10.100C.
C. Touch, yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway.
You got a motion, you got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
4-1.
That was a close one.
That was a motion to reconsider, now we have to reconsider the motion.
Now, Sarah, I...
Sarah, now we need to do the motion.
Yes, okay.
Same.
Did you catch all that, Stacy?
Yes.
Okay. So that, so that was a motion to reconsider the item. It passed, so now...
Redo it again.
We need redo it.
So now it would entertain a new motion.
To introduce and waive the first reading of this ordinance with the changes on 810120B, taking out county surveyor to substituting the chief building official, and taking out the last two sentences of B, and then moving to, I just took it offline. Mr. Stopper, could you, oh, here it is, under C...
Of 8.10.100.
100. Adding the sentence, Mr. Stopper, could you repeat the sentence you want?
I can't read it from here as Doug wrote it, please, sir.
The building official is authorized to use discretion in the interpretation of this standard in the event that mitigating circumstances prevent strict enforcement of these standards.
Oh, that's better than, yes, thank you. That's part of the motion.
You got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
You got it, 4-1.
Hey, I want to, you know, go back. Thank you, Doug, for spending about an hour and a half with us.
Sorry, Doug.
Let's, we have one more item, we'll take that real fast, which is supervisor announcement, and I'm going to start to my left with Supervisor Callaway.
Mr. Stopper mentioned something which has been ongoing for years and years and years, a business license. And to get a business license in Calaveras, we, every board says how cumbersome it is, and we haven't done anything about it. I think it would be time to put it on the to-do list for this board, either with me on the board or Mr. Hubbardie on the board, but we keep saying the same thing almost every year, and we do nothing about it. That's all I have, thank you.
Supervisor Garmendy?
I agree with Supervisor Callaway, we should get rid of business licenses.
The record showed I wasn't right when I said, but we did talk about streamlining, making things easier, and we've, that's it.
We'll reconsider. Lumberjack Day, Saturday, up in West Point, please come if you can, and next weekend will be, next Friday will be the UMR Annual Luncheon, which I think we're all invited to, so if you can make it, it's always a nice day, and nothing else to report, Madam Chair.
Okay, Supervisor Tofanari?
The only thing I had to report is the Melodrama in Valley Springs at the Vets Hall this Friday and Saturday. Please try and attend.
Supervisor Stopper?
I agree with Ms. Callaway.
That's one.
She's already got her fine for CSAC, hasn't she?
Well, I have nothing to report out at this time, and with that, we will convene for the day. Thank you, everybody, have a good one.